To the June 10, 2020, virtual public meeting for the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is Dee Oliver and I am the Chair. I call this public hearing to order. Today's public hearing is being conducted electronically in accordance with the Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2A3, Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413, and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted on March 31, 2020, and Chapter 854 of the 2019 Acts of Assembly as amended with me, the Chair of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission, having called this special meeting for today's public hearing. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted within 10 days on the Planning Commission website. Mr. Steve Barnes, Mr. Don Hornsley, and Mr. Whitney Graham will not be in attendance today. I have asked the staff to describe the order of business of today's meeting, and Mr. Landfair, will you please do that?
Bill, hold on one second. We'll note for the record that Mr. Redmond is running behind and he has not yet joined the virtual public hearing yet.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Oliver. To ensure this live electronic public hearing is successful, please note the following meeting order of agenda and instructions will be followed. The order of business will be as follows. Withdrawal and deferred agenda items. First is the consideration of requests to withdraw or defer an item. If you signed up to speak, you will be called upon following the applicant's request to withdraw or defer the item. However, please speak only to the matter of the withdrawal or the deferral and not to the merits of the item. Consent agenda items. These are items that the Planning Commission looks upon favorably and there are no speakers signed up to comment. Consent items will be voted upon as a block and will not be brought up again for further consideration by the Planning Commission. Last are the regular agenda items. These items will proceed in the following manner. A. Statements by the applicant or applicant's representative, followed by questions from the Planning Commission by raising their virtual hand. C. Statements by any registered speakers, followed by questions from the Planning Commission by raising their virtual hand. D. Rebuttal by the applicant or applicant's representative, followed by questions from the Planning Commission if desired, by raising their virtual hand. F. Deliberation of the application by the Planning Commission by raising their virtual hand. And G. Voting on the application by a verbal vote when recognized by staff. It is important that the Planning Commissioners hold their comments until recognized and to pause for three seconds after being recognized in order for staff to unmute you. Also, it is helpful for Commissioners to ask all questions at once and end by stating that you will stand by for responses. This helps to ensure that all of your questions are answered before moving on to the next Planning Commissioner. During Planning Commission's deliberation, there will be no further public comment unless a question is asked by the Commission. Staff will attempt to facilitate real-time citizen participation and comments in the public hearing for those citizens who have registered. Planning Commission policy provides 10 minutes for the applicant to present the request and all other speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you are the representative of a group, you are allowed 10 minutes to speak. Staff will be timing presentations. Please be advised that staff will mute you when your time expires. Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, there are six speakers registered for today's public hearing during the regular agenda for items 24 and 25. Those who have registered with staff to speak on the agenda item will be called in the order in which they registered. Speakers will have up to three minutes to make their comments, or 10 minutes if representing a group. If the speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, the next registered speaker will be called upon. Following each speaker's comments, the Planning Commission will be asked if there are any questions of the speaker, and if so, please indicate yes by raising your virtual hand. Speakers, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing and reverberation. Please note that once your name is called, you should wait three seconds to ensure the Planning Commission hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. Also, do not ask "can you hear me?" as only one feed is open at a time to minimize the echo reverberation, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. Once public comment is complete, the floor will be open for Planning Commission discussion and ultimate vote. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Chair will adjourn the public hearing. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that the experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Madam Chair and Members of the Planning Commission, are there any questions about the process, or does the Planning Director have additional comments? If so, please raise your virtual hand to be recognized. I will note that Mr. Redmond has now joined the group. Also, I would like to remind the Planning Commissioners to unmute their cameras if they wish to be seen. Seeing no more hands raised, we will now move on to the agenda. Madam Chair, there are no items requesting a withdrawal, so we will move on to the two applications requesting to be deferred. Agenda items 6 and 12. The first application is Agenda Item 6, the application of Atreese Lee Richard Jr., trustee of the Atreese Lee Richard Jr. revocable living trust for a subdivision variance to Section 4.4A of the subdivision regulations for the property located at 2968 Holland Road, Princess Anne District. The applicant's representative, Mr. Eddie Bourdon, has signed up to speak. Mr. Bourdon, the floor is now yours. Please pause for three seconds before speaking.
Madam Chair, for the record, Eddie Bourdon, Virginia Attorney, representing the applicant. The staff has requested that we make a modification to this application, which we're in agreement with, and in my understanding, it will be on next month's agenda. We appreciate the Commission deferring the matter today.
Ms. Oliver, you have the floor to open it up for Planning Commission if they have any questions of Mr. Bourdon.
I will open up the floor. If there are any questions or comments regarding the request for deferral to July 8, please raise your virtual hand if you have a comment or a motion, and staff will recognize you.
The second application requesting deferral is Agenda Item 12, application of Atlantic Development Associates, a conditional use permit for a short-term rental for the property located at 112B, 56th Street, Lynnhaven District. The applicant's representative, Mr. Eddie Bourdon, has signed up to speak. Mr. Bourdon, the floor is now yours. Please pause for three seconds before speaking.
Again, Madam Chair, for the record, Eddie Bourdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the application. The subject unit has been sold, and the purchaser, when they contracted to buy it, agreed it was already in play, the application had been filed, that they wanted to do the short-term rental as well. They've since had second thoughts, so we're doing indefinite deferral on this application. They are a party by their contract and by the documents to the other application, but this one we're deferring until they determine whether they want to pursue the use permit or not. So it's an indefinite deferral, it may not come back.
Ms. Oliver, you have the floor to open it up for Planning Commission if they have any questions of the applicant, or if they would like to make a motion.
Thank you. I will open the floor up if there are any questions or comments regarding the request for the deferral, or if there is a motion. Please raise your virtual hand, and staff will recognize you now.
Commissioner Weiner, your mic is open.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would move that we defer Item 6, and I believe that was until the June 24 meeting, and Item 12 indefinite deferral.
To clarify, Mr. Weiner, the Item Number 6 is deferred to the July 8 meeting.
Madam Chair, staff opens the mic to you to call for a second.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Commissioner Inman, your mic is now open.
I second the motion.
Hearing a second, a motion to defer applications 6 and 12, as noted, have been made by Commissioner Weiner and seconded by Commissioner Inman. Are there any Planning Commissioners abstaining on these items to be deferred? At this time, please raise your virtual hand for staff to recognize you, so that you may provide an explanation for your abstention. The vote is now open, and staff will call each Commissioner individually. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes; if you are opposed, say no. Please remember to pause after your name is called before speaking. Mr. Alcaraz. Mr. Costin. Mr. Inman. Ms. Klein. Ms. Oliver. Mr. Redmond. Mr. Wall. Mr. Weiner. Marshall Coleman will now announce the vote result.
By a recorded vote of 8, 4, and 0 against, Items 6 and 12 have been deferred as noted. Item 6 will be deferred until the July 8 hearing, and Item 12 is indefinitely deferred.
Before we proceed, I would like to make a point of clarification. Previously, I had stated that there are six speakers registered for today's public hearing during the regular agenda, and I cited two items, 24 and 25. It's actually for Items 9, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 30. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is the consent agenda. There are applications that are recommended for approval by staff, and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. Based on this morning's discussion, the following applications will be placed on the consent agenda. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 11, with amended condition number 1, as noted, 13, 14, with a new condition noted, 15, with a new condition, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 26, 27, 28, 29, 31, 32, 33, and 34. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the first consent agenda item is Item 1, Vogue Lashes and Spa for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor for the property located at 993 Laskin Road in the Beach District. The applicant's representative is Mr. Ilya Kalikin. Mr. Kalikin, when you begin speaking, please first identify yourself for the record and indicate whether you support staff's recommendation. Mr. Kalikin, the floor is yours. Please pause three seconds before speaking, so that we can unmute your microphone. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, we're applying for a conditional use permit for this spa. That's our second location, and we are only looking for the permanent makeup part of
Thank you. The next item on consent is Item Number 2, Church of the Ascension, a request for a modification of conditions to add a 2,800 square foot administrative office to the existing church at property located at 4853 Princess Anne Road in the Kempsville District. The applicant's representative is Mr. Billy Garrington. Mr. Garrington, when you begin speaking, please first identify yourself for the record and indicate whether you found the conditions acceptable. Mr. Garrington, the floor is yours. Please pause three seconds before speaking, so that we can unmute your microphone. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Planning Commission, for the record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of the applicant in this request, Church of the Ascension, property known as 4853 Princess Anne Road. I have read the staff report. The four conditions that are in the report are agreeable, and we thank you for putting this on the consent agenda. I'm standing by.
Thank you. The next item on consent is Item Number 3, Emmanuel B. Platon, for a conditional use permit request for an automotive repair garage to install paint booth at 5044 Cleveland Street in the Bayside District. The applicant is Mr. Emmanuel Platon. Mr. Platon, when you begin speaking, first identify yourself for the record and indicate whether you found the conditions acceptable. Mr. Platon, the floor is yours. Please pause three seconds before speaking, so that we can unmute your microphone. Thank you.
Good afternoon, sir, ma'am. My name is Emmanuel Platon, applying for an auto body repair shop paint booth permit, which is located at 5044 Cleveland Street, Virginia Beach.
Thank you. The next item on consent is Item Number 4, Rochelle Reed, for a conditional use permit request for a family daycare home at 1674 Dillon Drive in the Kempsville District. The applicant is Ms. Rochelle Reed. Ms. Reed, when you begin speaking, please first identify yourself for the record and indicate whether you found the conditions acceptable. Ms. Reed, the floor is yours. Please pause three seconds before speaking, so that we can unmute your microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm requesting a conditional use permit for my in-home daycare at 1674 Dillon Drive in Virginia Beach, Virginia. My name is Rochelle Reed, and I do find it acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on consent is Item Number 5, Incredible Tattoo LLC, for a conditional use permit request for a tattoo parlor at 1630 General Booth Boulevard, Suite 112, in the Princess Anne District. The applicant's representative is Mr. Eddie Bourdon. Mr. Bourdon, when you begin speaking, please first identify yourself for the record and indicate whether you found the conditions acceptable. Mr. Bourdon, the floor is yours. Please pause three seconds before speaking, so that we can unmute your microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landfair. Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, for the record, Eddie Bourdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Inc. Incredible Tattoo LLC. We appreciate the item being on the consent agenda. All three conditions are acceptable, and also want to thank Jonathan Sanders for his work on the request.
The next item on consent is Item Number 7, Lorna C. Donatone, QPRT, for a conditional use permit request for a community peer at 1421 and 1423 Blue Heron Road in the Lynnhaven District. The applicant's representative is Mr. Bob Simon. Mr. Simon, when you begin speaking, please first identify yourself for the record and indicate whether you found the conditions acceptable. Mr. Simon, the floor is yours. Please pause three seconds before speaking, so that we can unmute your microphone. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Members of the Planning Commission. Robert Simon, for the record, representing Donatone on this application, and we've read the conditions, and are in agreement with the condition, and thank you for placing this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item on consent is Item Number 8, City of Virginia Beach. Item 8 is an ordinance to amend Section 201 of the city zoning ordinance pertaining to setbacks for in-ground pools adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean. Both staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of this ordinance amendment, and since there is no opposition to these requests, the Planning Commission places it on the consent agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on the consent agenda, as they meet the applicable requirements for Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance. Staff in the Planning Commission supports the applications, and there are no speakers signed up to comment. Items 10, 11, with amended condition number 1, as noted, 13, 14, with a new condition, 15, with a new condition, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, I'm sorry, 31, 32, 33, and 34. Madam Chair, that concludes the consent agenda, noting that Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 26, 27, 28, 29, 31, 32, 33, and 34 are all on the consent agenda. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission? Staff notes that Commissioner Inman raised his hand. Commissioner Inman, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I need to disclose that I am an advisory board member for Town Bank. We do not have any loan approval function, and I do not have any other conflict in this regard, and I am permitted to vote, but I've made that disclosure, and I will vote. Thank you.
Staff notes that Commissioner Costin raised his hand. Commissioner Costin, the floor is yours. Thank you.
John Costin, just wanted to notify everyone that I'm an officer at Item 18. I'm noted in the documents as an officer, but I will be voting.
Staff notes that Commissioner Inman has raised his hand. Commissioner Inman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Bill. I'm not sure I noted that it was Item 1 that presents the Town Bank issue.
Madam Chair, staff does not see any further questions of the Commission, so I will open up your mic for you to call for a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Commissioner Weiner, your mic is now open.
I'm in approval of the consent agenda.
Staff opens the mic for you to call for a second.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Commissioner Klein, your mic is now open.
I second the motion.
Hearing a second, a motion to approve the following applications, Agenda Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 26, 27, 28, 29, 31, 32, 33, and 34, by consent, has been made by Commissioner Weiner and seconded by Commissioner Klein. Are any Planning Commissioners abstaining from the vote? Please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no hands raised, the vote is now open, and staff will call each Commissioner individually. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes; if you are opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz. Mr. Costin. Mr. Inman. Ms. Klein. Ms. Oliver. Mr. Redmond. Mr. Wall. Mr. Weiner. Marshall Coleman will announce the vote result.
By a recorded vote of 8, 4, and 0 against, the following items, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 26, 27, 28, 29, 31, 32, 33, and 34 have been approved by consent, with the condition changes noted on Item 11 to remove Unit 112B and Items 14 and 15 to indicate no vehicles longer and no wider than 18 feet. If you have an application that was on the consent agenda, your request will now be scheduled for an upcoming city council meeting. Staff will contact you about that date. Feel free to exit the meeting if you'd like. Thank you for your participation, and I'll hand the meeting back over to Bill.
Madam Chair and Members of the Planning Commission, the next order of business is the regular agenda. The presentation of the regular agenda is as follows. Statements by the applicant or applicant's representative, followed by questions by the Planning Commission of the applicant or staff. Statements by any registered speakers, followed by questions by the Planning Commission of the speaker or staff. Rebuttal by the applicant or applicant's representative, followed by questions by the Planning Commission if desired of the applicant or staff. And deliberation of the application by the Planning Commission with a motion followed by a vote. There are six items on the regular agenda, Items 9, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 30. Agenda Item 9, You're Not Alone LLC, for a conditional use permit request for a short-term rental at 20779th Street, Unit C in the Lynnhaven District. The applicant is Michael Hunt. Mr. Hunt has signed up to speak. Please provide a summary of your request, and remember to identify yourself for the record and pause three seconds before speaking, so that we can activate your microphone. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission and the Commission members. This is Michael Hunt that has the You're Not Alone LLC at Unit C on 79th Street. What I'd like to say is I'm a North Ender. I lived in that home for 15 years. I know most, all the neighbors on the whole street. We get along great. We still go to the beach together, ride bikes together, even though I moved over to Lincoln Bay, and we are old friends, and I started remodeling the place back in February and told them what I was going to do. My intentions were to really move back into my home and put furniture in in a couple of years, and my next-door neighbor, who is 207D, had short-term rental, which I didn't even know about, had parking there, never more than two cars that I could ever see. He never had more than maybe one family there, which I would plan to do, never had more than one family unless their grandkids want to come down, and they'd only have two cars. Never had a problem with parking. I'm glad you brought that up, because I was thinking about it, so I talked to him next door, and he says he never had more than two cars. I've never seen more than two cars there, and we don't want more than two cars. And I did that for the zoning commission, because they said if you got three bedrooms, show that you could put three cars on it. They diagrammed it out, as you can see, and three cars are there, using a little bit of the apron, not much, and as I mentioned, it's not but a foot difference there that put the three cars on back-to-back. Also, for the zoning commission, put up a sign that said, "Do not block sidewalk," in case some element comes through and can't get through, but you cannot see a sidewalk across C and D's pavement. It's an invisible sidewalk, but we put that sign up as zoning commission asked. I think we followed all the rules and regulations of the zoning commission, and they approved it, and my thoughts are, the gentleman across the street and my neighbors, one of the gentlemen across the street will be my property manager, he will make sure there are no more than two cars there, or he'll go over and talk to them about it, because I'll put that in the Airbnb short-term rental lease. We don't want more than two cars. We don't want more than two cars. I've never seen and watched five years, four years with the guy next door and he said, "Mike, I've never had a problem." And as you can see, there's been no rebuttal from anybody on that street because we're all friends, we're all neighbors, and I don't want to become anybody but a good friendly neighbor because we are planning on using it. We have grandkids that live in Richmond, their best friends live around the corner. They come down and want to stay in it too when it's not rented and they just have the one car that they would bring. So I don't see where, I'll probably be the better of anybody on that street of controlling and making sure that that street is safe, has no more than two cars on it. And from history shows that the gentleman next door, I've never seen more than two cars on it and he didn't want it. And he's all for me, the neighbors are all for it, they're okay with it. The neighbor next door is going to be helping me with the rental and she will watch out for it. She had an Airbnb also. The sister of the guy that will be checking in, the guest that's across the street, part-time with his sister, will be watching out for the cars coming and going and people coming and going. So we will have heavy restrictions on what people will be doing because if we move back in, we certainly don't want to have any conflicts with our neighbors. But we thank the zoning commission for figuring out a way to put three cars on there but we don't see where we'll have more than, ever more than two cars and we can make that a definite to the Airbnb guidelines. Thank you all for listening to me. I appreciate you listening to me. And if you have any alternatives for me, please tell me. I'll be glad to listen to anything you'd like for me to do but I want to follow all your rules and regulations. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the Planning Commission? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Are there any more questions of the applicant at this time by the commission? There are no more speakers, Madam Chair. You have the floor, Ms. Oliver, for Planning Commission discussion.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to open up the floor for discussion by the Planning Commission or entertain a motion. Please raise your hand if you have a comment or a motion and staff will open your microphone.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Inman. Your mic is open for comment.
Thank you, Bill. As I said in the informal session, I have a problem with the fact that there's a parking space in the city right-of-way and I don't think that complies with the express provisions in the ordinance, which says it must be on-site parking. I don't have anything against Mr. Hunt's proposal otherwise. He sounds like a fine fellow who has sort of tested the market, so to speak, with his neighbors and has a good plan to try to be a good neighbor while he's using this for a short-term rental. However, I don't like setting this precedent and of having the parking in the city right-of-way despite the fact that it looks like it may stay that way for a long time. And I particularly have a problem in this case because there's a sidewalk there and while I know Mr. Hunt says he doesn't expect or want more than two cars, he could still get, end up with three cars there when someone's visiting as a short-term rental, whether it be occupants who are staying there or visitors who come to see them. And I think it's very likely, many occasions, that people will park on top of the sidewalk inadvertently until they get up to the house or maybe never even notice the sign due to another vehicle parked in front of them. So I oppose this application. I'm wondering from staff, is there, and I think I heard Mr. Hunt reference, is there another permit that's been issued, conditional use permit on this property? That's a question. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Inman, no, there's not another conditional use permit that's been granted to this property. I believe Mr. Hunt was confusing his review with the zoning staff, referring to them as a commission, but there is no other approval, although I do note I believe the other unit may be registered and grandfathered, so.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner Weiner, your mic is open for comment.
Mr. Lampere, can you bring up the parking diagram to look at? There's a note on yours that there's not a note on the package that I have right there down at the bottom next to number 3, "Public right-of-way begins at the property line", property line 279, should I see? Okay, okay. I read that wrong, my fault. You know, this is a North End situation where we've approved these before and we were consistently approving them. I know that we have this situation in North End, we talked about it before. Yes, the driveway does go into the right-of-way but it's just, it's that way. I don't understand, you know, it's so, you know, over 18 feet, it's 27 feet. I don't see a problem with parking there. It's got to be used for something. And if a car's parked there, just one car, and I don't have a problem with it. I'm going to be supporting it.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Alcaraz. Commissioner Alcaraz, your mic is open for comment.
Thanks, Bill. This is George Alcaraz. Again, as the informal, I agree with Mr. Inman. We have three bedrooms, three required parking spaces. One parking space is off-site. Another parking space is not standard to the 9 by 18. So actually, they have one parking space that's by the ordinance, so I'm going to have to recommend disapproval to. I'm not approving it.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Wall. Commissioner Wall, your mic is open for comment.
Thank you. This is Jack Wall and I kind of concur with that but to be consistent, I think we have approved whether it's one foot over the right-of-way or whether it's, you know, three feet or, you know, 18 feet into the right-of-way. If that's a typical parking strategy, then I'm fine with it. And that appears to be the case on 79th Street. And I think that, you know, some of the comments that Mr. Hunt had, he seems to be an outstanding neighbor, you know, genuine, sincere. However, in the parking space number two is deficient by one foot. And whether it's deficient by six inches, if we're looking at 9 by 18 spaces, or it's deficient by, you know, four feet, you know, where do we draw that line? Is our standard now 18 by 8 and not 18 by 9? So, you know, for that, yeah, I think that's something that, you know, we need to decide on and I think that that's, you know, applicable to this application but it's applicable also to other applications. So, so that's, so I'm standing by right now for any responses.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Costin. Commissioner Costin, your mic is open for comment.
As we look at this item, the situation exists there that can never be fixed until there is a large developer who would develop the whole thing. And I don't see why we would prohibit this guy from operating in his own driveway. Technically, it's his driveway and the sidewalk noted there's really the driveway. I mean, there's not a separate sidewalk in the middle of that right-of-way. I will be supporting it.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Redmond. Commissioner Redmond, your mic is open for comment.
Thank you, Bill. I agree with Mr. Weiner and Mr. Costin. Look, I park my car at the end of my driveway in the city right-of-way probably four times a week when I'm pulling out the lawn mower or I'm, just makes it easier for me to get in and out of my garage or to do anything. I mean, the idea that in your own garage with this paper designation of city right-of-way, sorry, your own driveway, this paper designation of city right-of-way that you're in any way impeding anything strikes me as, you know, as not terribly credible. So, I mean, I understand we can disagree on those things but to me, it is a difference without a distinction. Jack, to your question about the parking space, the length of the parking space, as I said this morning, I mean, I've never owned an eight-foot-wide car, let alone a nine-foot-wide car. And it just seems to me that's, we're splitting hairs on stuff like that. That standard does not make much sense to me. I don't know if there's a better one but it doesn't make much sense to me. This is an application where there's no opposition, all his neighbors are friends. There may well be one that exists already as Bobby mentioned with regard to the grandfathered unit next door, which so far hasn't had a lot of incidents. So I don't really see what's terribly objectionable about this application. To me, I'll be supporting it and I thank you.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner Weiner, your mic is open for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lampere. I want to go back to being consistent again, just want to point out one thing, point out one thing real quick. I've made a bunch of notes here, listened to everything today and I did watch the council meeting last night, most of it. But if something happens and we go back in, I don't, and staff don't get mad when I say this, I don't think we can do this in 100 days, in my opinion, on short-term rental. But this could be something we need to bring up because I know it's in the right-of-way but Mr. Costin brought up a good point, it's his driveway. So something we need to bring up. It's not in our ordinance right now for short-term rental. It could be, but I want to be consistent and that's why I'm going to support this application. Thank you.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Wall. Commissioner Wall, your mic is open for comment.
My apologies. I need to lower my hand.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Redmond. Commissioner Redmond, your mic is open for comment.
I'm in Jack's boat, my apologies.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Inman. Commissioner Inman, your mic is open for comment.
Thank you, Bill. I hear what everybody's saying. It's a tough one and this is exactly why we need to be consistent. Now, you'll say, "Oh, well, we have already done this." Well, we have done it a couple of times but it doesn't make it right and we've got 100 more to go. We may or may not have an amendment to the ordinance that takes care of this problem. We may or may not have it. So right now, the ordinance says it has to be on-site. Each of these ones that has the driveway off-site has a little bit of difference. I mean, sometimes it's, you know, 10 feet, sometimes it's the whole car, sometimes there's a sidewalk in between, which is, I think, problematic. So every time we have one of these, we're going to have to have this discussion about, you know, what's the real impact of it on the neighborhood and is it appropriate for this property and so forth. So I would like to make a path forward where we just make the decision that these are not going to be approved with off-site parking. So that's the way I feel about it and that way there's no discriminating against anybody and rules a rule and live by the rule or get it changed.
There are no more speakers, Madam Chair. You have the floor, Ms. Oliver, for planning to call for a motion.
Great, thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner Weiner, your mic is now open. Commissioner Weiner, your mic is now open. Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Weiner as a potential motion. Commissioner Weiner, your mic is now open.
I move approval of this application.
Chair, staff opens the mic for you to call for a second.
May I have a second, please?
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redmond. Commissioner Redmond, your mic is now open. Hearing a second, a motion to approve the application has been made by Commissioner Weiner and seconded by Commissioner Redmond. Are any planning commissioners abstaining from the vote? The vote is now open and staff will call each commissioner individually. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes. If you are opposed, say no. Please pause three seconds after your name is called before speaking. Mr. Alcaraz. Mr. Costin.
Yes.
Mr. Inman. Ms. Klein. Ms. Oliver.
No.
Mr. Redmond.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
No.
Mr. Weiner. Marshall Coleman will announce the vote result.
By a recorded vote of 4, 4, and 4 against, agenda item 9 is hereby recommended for denial by the Planning Commission.
Agenda items 22 and 23, McCleskey &amp; Associates for conditional use permits, request for short-term rentals at 1405 Cypress Avenue, Units A and B in the Beach District. The applicant's representative is Chris Wood. Mr. Wood has signed up to speak. Please provide a summary of your request and remember to identify yourself for the record and pause three seconds before speaking so that we can activate your microphone. Mr. Wood, you have the floor. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Chris Wood and I represent the applicant. I'm a vice president in charge of all of construction, development, and property management for McCleskey &amp; Associates. In an order, in an attempt to be efficient, I also have four other speakers speaking for items, multiple items, 20 through 25 and 30. But after speaking with them, I'm going to be saying pretty much what they said so I don't necessarily think it's an efficient use of time for them to speak but they will be available if y'all would like to hear from them. Before I begin, please let me take the opportunity to thank the staff, especially Will Miller who has worked tirelessly for both the applicant and the concerned citizens and has been a big help. The McCleskey family has owned these properties for decades. The McCleskey family also has several hundred rental units throughout the area and has been in the property management business for more than 70 years and we expect to do several hundred more over the next 10 years or so. So it's a very experienced property manager. As you're aware, most of you are aware, McCleskey rarely sells any of their properties so this will be very important that the asset is maintained well and managed well. All of our properties, including any short-term rentals, will also have a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week call center to handle any complaints from neighbors. seven-day-a-week call center to handle any complaints from neighbors, residents, or any other maintenance issues. Additionally, they all have my cellphone number, which, after 30 years in property management, I'm used to getting calls in the middle of the night, and so I'm available as well. Specifically, on the South Side properties, we believe these are uniquely appropriate for a short-term rental. They're near the South Side Marina. We have, I'm sorry, this is Cypress, isn't it? I apologize. Okay. I did hear some questions during the informal meeting, and to be clear, we're going to be building the same duplex whether or not it's used for short-term rental. As I mentioned, McCleskey does not sell their properties generally, so this will be a long-term rental unit regardless of what we've done. The duplex has been designed as a rental, not as a for-sale product, and if you'll notice, we have the both garages in the front to eliminate the traditional oceanfront, south end, north end, long living of concrete to get to the back unit. So, we think that definitely makes it nicer. We started building this, but then, as part of our COVID response, we stopped building all projects until rental revenues have returned to normal, which obviously, I would assume that we probably won't pick this back up until the fall at the earliest. That said, the reason that we are asking for the short-term rental now is simply because we, number one, we don't know how long it's going to take till we start again, and number two, I think you all would agree with me that the rules are likely going to change, and we want to make sure that we have our properties at least in there. All that said, if y'all would think that we should defer this until it's built, we can certainly do that, but I can assure you that this is the building. It's going to look exactly like this, and it's going to look exactly like the plans, whether it's now or later, and we will not, this will be the building. So, whether or not we use it for short-term rental, this is what it's going to be. So, I think those are some of the comments that I heard, and if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the Planning Commission? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner Weiner, your mic is open for comment.
Yes, Mr. Wood, I understand what you're saying. I know you're going to, you said you're going to build this no matter what. So, you would not have a problem deferring this indefinitely until we actually go through the ordinance again, because it might be when the ordinance comes out that there's not going to be any more short-term rentals allowed in that area, especially if we go to an overlay district. Just wanted to make sure that you're aware of all that information.
Mr. Wood, would you like to respond?
Yeah, that is my, that is a big concern. We would rather have it heard now. Again, the property is going to look this way, whether it's now on paper or it's done later, and whether or not we use it for long-term rental or short-term rental, it's going to be this exact property, and I think it's well-designed, well-thought-out. It's been designed as a rental, and McCleskey has a long history of maintaining their properties and doing it. So, I would prefer to hear it now, and especially with the COVID response, and assuming that we will not be continuing to build until probably at least September, August. It won't be done until probably mid-'21, early '21, if everything goes right. We would prefer to hear it now, but I certainly would consider deferring it, but I do share the concern that the risk of the moratorium and the rules change.
Thank you. Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Redmond. Commissioner Redmond, your mic is open for comment.
Yeah, I think we need to be a little bit careful about drifting in this territory where new construction can't be rented. New construction can only be something you live in or for a long-term rental. We just disposed of one application where there was a sidewalk separating parking spaces. Well, that's because it's an existing building. Now, they're designing a new building, which they can do precisely to specifications, and which presumably would be more closely attuned, because you're not trying to fit a building that's already there into regulations that have been written decades after, you know, a house was built. It is hardly the only duplex in Virginia Beach. So, I don't think the building itself is particularly unusual, and I just, and we see this on 22nd Street, of course, the Miller Group developed, I forgot the name of the project, developed property for that, and those are very nice units. It's not the first time we've seen this. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to kind of slouch towards this notion that new construction has to be something you live in and nothing else. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So, I don't find anything particularly objectionable about it, and go from there. Thank you.
Staff acknowledges the hand raised by Commissioner Oliver.
Mr. Wood, so I understand, what I understand about the application is that you're building it specifically for short-term rental, and I have no objection to the architecture of the building. It's lovely. Would you consider, I mean, since we're talking about short-term rental as the impact of the neighborhoods, I mean, and you do regular rental property, would you not consider this for a regular rental property as just in a regular summer rental and winter rental or year-round rental? Or does it, do you feel the need for it to be specifically designated for short-term rental?
Mr. Wood, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. The, and if I misspoke, I apologize. We did not design this for short-term rental. We designed this for a rental, whether it's short-term or a monthly. It could be used either. The closets are big enough for a regular rental. You know, it's certainly not designed as a short-term rental, and I apologize if I misspoke, but no, it is not designed as a short-term rental. It's only designed as a rental. And yes, we might, we want to be able to use this as a short-term, but even if we get this approval, you're absolutely right, we may choose to just keep this as a regular rental. We do have a demand, an in-house demand. We have a lot of large yachts, as you can imagine, coming into the fishing center. They have crews, and not all the crews want to stay on the boats. So, we do have, from time to time, people that want to live in a house while they're here, spending money in Virginia Beach, and obviously, we all want that. So, that is a demand, and when we get to the South Side properties, that's probably even more of a demand, since it's right by where their boats would be. But no, we, I mean, we, not sure we will use this as a short-term rental, but we may. I hope that answers your question.
I think it answers my question. I just, I guess our concern is with the area, especially this particular area, with the amount of short-term rentals here, that the intent to build a building specifically for short-term rental is somewhat concerning.
Mr. Wood, would you like to respond?
Yes, and again, please let me be clear. This building was not built in any way, shape, or form to be a short-term rental. We had this design, we've been working on it for a while, so no, it is not designed to be a short-term rental. It's designed to be a rental. It will never be sold, and it will always be a rental. Whether or not it's a short-term rental, I don't know. But I would also say that I know this is really uncharted territory, and it's new for everybody, but I also don't want to be penalized, because we're the last guy there, and everybody else has got it, and because everybody else in the neighborhood has it, we can't get it. So, I appreciate your thought, but this was not designed as a short-term rental. As I said, the closets are big. It's designed to be a rental, period, and I'm not sure whether or not we would use it as a short-term, but we'd like to have that option, especially given we have people that are looking when they come into town.
Thank you. Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Edman. Commissioner Edman, your mic is open for comment.
Thank you, Bill. Chris, I understand exactly what you're proposing and your reasons for it, and if you have followed this commission and our adventure with short-term rentals, you'll know that we've developed lots of concerns about the direction it's going and the impact on neighborhoods, and there's no neighborhood more impacted than the one that you're in with this particular property, unfortunately. And we're worried about disrupting neighborhoods and with too many transient uses over and over again. So, yes, it's a very nice product. I'm sure it'll rent very nicely. I would like to see you limit it to regular types of rentals as opposed to short-term rentals in light of what's going on in the neighborhood. I understand you want something different. It's an ordinance, it's on the books, and I, but I, I do not like the idea of approving applications that where the property doesn't exist yet, or the structure doesn't exist yet. So, those are, those are my concerns, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Wood, would you like to respond?
Oh, yeah, real briefly, I agree with Mike, and I, and I do, I do share the same concern about properties that are built to be a business or a hotel, but I think everybody there knows that McCleskey has a track record of the last 70-plus years of maintaining their properties, being good neighbors, being very proactive, and this is going to be no different. Now, I would have been happy to wait until this was built to come in, but again, in light of COVID and everything else that's happening, we don't know when we'll back to business, but I appreciate your comments, and I do share your concern that people build these as a business, but this is not that. This is going to be something that we would build regardless, and we maintain it, we maintain our properties well, but I appreciate your comments.
More questions of the applicant at this time by the commission. Seeing none, we do have two speakers signed up to comment. The first speaker is Lauren Lersh, followed by Cindy Sable. Note that you have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself for the record and pause three seconds before speaking. Thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Sable. Ms. Sable, note that you have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself for the record and pause three seconds before speaking. Thank you. Madam Chair, neither speaker is online. As such, I will open up the mic for you to call for a motion.
Thank you. So, I will open up the floor for discussion by the Planning Commission or entertain a motion at this time. Please raise your hand if you have a comment or a motion, and the staff will unmute you.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Wall. Your mic is open for comment.
Thank you. This is Jack Wall, and so I'm just curious, you know, it's more of just a comment than an actual, you know, necessarily leaning one way or the other, but does it, it almost appears that it's kind of a commercialization. You know, you're building, and you know, I understand Mr. Wood's comments, and I kind of applaud him actually for, you know, I think it's probably a wise decision, you know, just to go ahead and, you know, bring it before the city in order to gain your approval. And, you know, it's an attractive structure. I think it blends well with the neighborhood, but at the same time, you kind of wonder, you know, is, does it set a trend? Is it, you know, is it a pattern that, you know, constructing, you know, houses for, you know, for this, you know, for short-term rentals? You know, we saw one a few months ago, and they had, it was clearly, you know, rental, you know, they weren't, you know, the garage was six feet wide, and that was more for, you know, activity, toys and such, not necessarily toys, but, you know, for surfboards and for, you know, other, other things, you know, such as that. But, you know, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, just kind of talking out loud, you know, is this kind of a, you know, a trend that we're going to start seeing, are homes being constructed strictly for, you know, for short-term rentals? And that's it. Thanks, that's all I have.
Madam Chair, do we have a motion?
Are there any more? Since we opened it on the floor, are there any more commissioners that want to speak?
There are no more commissioners who want to speak.
All right. May I have a motion, please?
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner Weiner, your mic is open for comment.
Yes, thank you, Bill. I would really like to have the applicant want to draw this or defer it right now, but it seems like they don't want to. And again, I'm going to go back to our ordinance, we're going to have to go back and look at and deal with, and, but I just, I know that the applicant does very good work. They're a reputable company. They'll take care of the project, but that's, the point is, is it being built for short-term rental, kind of confusing, but I'm going to motion for approval of this application, and the only reason why, want to comment why, it's something we're going to have to go back and look at. We haven't done this. We've approved one, a couple before that are being built already, and we approved them inconsistent again, and, but it's something we're definitely going to have to look at in the future when we sit down. He keeps saying this, but I don't think we're going to get this done in 100 days. So, I'm going to motion for approval on this one.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redmond. Your mic is open for comment.
Thank you, Bill. I'm a little confused by this conversation. People have been building houses near the beach, every beach on planet Earth, for rental purposes for 100 years. The idea that someone would suddenly build a house for rental near the beach is not exactly, you know, crazy to me. That's, it's not like Martians landed. I mean, it's very common. So, in this case, strikes me as a fine-looking house that none, you know, another duplex, rather, in any, in any other way would not be objectionable. So, and, you know, this is a builder with a track record of excellent management. I don't, I don't understand that. So, and I do agree with the things that David just said, so with all that, I would second his motion for approval. Thanks.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Costin. Your mic is open for comment.
Well, Commissioner Redmond has already seconded, but I was going to say that I've had the pleasure of going in some of those buildings down there where they rent to people who are off the boats, and beautiful properties. I see no problem with what they're trying to do there. I see no problem with what they're trying to do there.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redmond. Your mic is open for comment.
Sorry, did it again.
Hearing a second, a motion to approve the application has been made by Commissioner Weiner and seconded by Commissioner Redmond. Are any planning commissioners abstaining from the vote? Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Inman. Your mic is open for comment.
This isn't about an abstention. It's, I just feel a need to respond to Mr. Redmond is that the whole thing has to do with saturation of a neighborhood with short-term rental candidate properties, which I would put this in since they're saying this is not only for short-term rental. And I take Mr. Wood at his word on that. But it is what it is, and it can be sold to anyone else and not necessarily always retained by his company. And it's therefore short-term rental. And it could be a very prolific short-term rental property, very attractive. So the point isn't that, yes, there have been lots of duplexes built in Virginia Beach. Yes, it's an attractive residence. The point is, we are concerned about saturation of the area and to the exclusion of a neighborhood feeling anymore for short-term rentals. That's what it's about. It's not about how pretty it is. So that's, I just want to make sure we all understand what our mission is here as opposed to anything else. Thank you.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redmond. Your mic is open for comment.
Yeah, and I understand that, Mike. I understand what your concern is. You've been very clear about that, and I respect it entirely. My, my point was about the idea that, it seemed to be kind of a funny idea that it was strange somehow that there would be new construction, you know, in a resort area for the purposes of rentals. That's been happening all over the planet for a very, very long time. I do understand your concerns, and I respect them, as you know. And so I appreciate that comment. Thanks.
The vote is now open, and staff will call each commissioner individually. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes. If you are opposed, say no. Please pause three seconds after your name is called before speaking. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Koston?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
I'm sorry. Could you tell what the motion was one more time, please?
Hearing a second, a motion to approve the application has been made by Commissioner Weiner and seconded by Commissioner Redmond. It's a motion to approve.
No.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Marshall Coleman will announce the vote result.
By a recorded vote of seven, four, and one against, Agenda Items 22 and 23 are hereby recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Agenda Items 24 and 25, La Paz LLC, for a conditional use permit request for a short-term rental at 2565 Shore Drive, Units A and B in the Lynn Haven District. The applicant's representative is Chris Wood. Mr. Wood is the applicant's representative and has signed up to speak. Please provide a summary of your request. And remember to identify yourself for the record and pause three seconds before speaking so that we can activate your microphone. Mr. Wood, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair. I apologize. When you tried to ask for the other speakers, they were not going to speak, but I had no way on the last one to tell you that. The same thing's going to happen here. I don't believe any of those people will speak, just so you're aware. So my name again is Chris Wood. I represent and own the property at 2565 Shore Drive. The property is more than 50 years old. I think the city thinks it was built in 65. I believe it was built before that. And as, and the big issue here is the traffic, as you all know. In fact, the entire reason I purchased this property was because there was a huge visibility issue in turning out of Cape Henry Shores onto Shore Drive. When I bought it, cars were actually sticking out onto Shore Drive. Since I purchased the property 10 years ago, I've made a lot of efforts. I rented a Bobcat and removed about five foot of the front yard. So now cars can pull up closer to the house and further from Shore Drive. I actually took out as much dirt as I could without jeopardizing the foundation of the structure. Again, let me thank Will Miller. He's been instrumental in helping, and he's worked with Todd Solomon of Shore Drive and Joe Avalon of Cape Henry Shores and myself to help design the best parking to the extent possible. I have lived in the neighborhood for 22 years. I currently live five houses down from the property. I have been in the property management business for more than 30 years, and my wife is a real estate agent also with Atkinson Real Estate. So she's got experience as well. I have reached out to all my neighbors. My neighbors all have my cell phone number. I'm available 24/7. I've spoken with the immediate neighbors and with Cape Story Civic League. And as you all know, I have letters of support from several neighbors, including two of them immediately across the street. I believe this is an excellent location for a short-term rental as there are only two immediate neighbors, and this is not, quote unquote, "in the neighborhood." It's on the outside of the neighborhood, right on Shore Drive, adjacent to First Landing State Park. I agree with the conditions and the change in the parking plan. We're going to do the best we can to make it safe. And we've also requested of the city to do a line of site study from, I guess it would be east of this property, from Kendall, to see if there are some improvements that the city can do along as well. So that's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the Planning Commission? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Redmond. Commissioner Redmond, your mic is open for comment.
Well, I guess it really isn't for Mr. Wood. I'm just curious if that satisfies the neighbor's concerns about visibility. I guess so.
Are there any more questions of the applicant at this time by the commission?
If we can get staff online, Mr. Miller, Will Miller, if you're on. I know you had discussed with the, those that had concerns and have showed them this most recent parking layout. If you could put it for the record, your discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Tahan. Yes, I got an email from the Cape Henry Shores Civic League president that based on the revised plan, which the only copy of it is what you see there in the PowerPoint, because this all happened late, late yesterday and early this morning. As long as no one, there's no parking in that first nine or 10 feet from the right-of-way line, and there's a, an area of planting where you see that little star in the lower left that is very clear for these rental tenants not to park in that area or possibly even unable to park, again with a raised bed, making it even more challenging for someone to try to drive up and over it. They would be okay with this scheme as you see it. Mr. Solomon, he, I think, is registered to speak today, and he had some questions for Rick Lowman, our city engineer, who has contacted me during this hearing and is prepared to speak on those. So I'm not as sure about Mr. Solomon, but I am positive about the Cape Henry Shores based on, Civic League, based on this scheme as you see it. So I'm not sure if we need to modify any conditions or add something today to make this a part of the recommended approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more questions of the applicant at this time by the commission? Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Wall. Commissioner Wall, your mic is open for comment.
I have none for the applicant now. It was, that's just for general discussion.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Inman. Commissioner Inman, your mic is open for comment.
Thank you, Bill. My concern is what's going to go on in the front part of the property in terms of parking. I see there's one space there, and not having physically seen the property, I'm understanding there's some sort of landscaping mound on the corner. Then there's, apparently there's a paved area. The rest of it's paved, appears to be. So it's a question, I guess, I've got, is it paved? If it is, I think I'd like to see some no-parking signs be required because those vehicles could come in and park straight on and block the view of people coming out of Kendall Street. That's all I got.
Mr. Inman, as we try to get the photographs on the screen, as you can see, the site is currently under construction. Marshall, can you, I'm sorry, can you go back? Or Bill? To the next, I'm sorry, the next photo? The site is currently under construction. They are working on improving the duplex in accordance with the approval from City Council. And based on the parking plan that is here, it is noted that there will be a raised planter bed to prohibit parking in that front area, which was an area of concern, and only allow for the one parking space. It's typical for the rental of these short-term rentals. On certain websites, you do tech, a lot of times have to help and show folks where to park, and these would be under what he would need to do for his rental agreements for, if this were to be approved.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Inman. Commissioner Inman, your mic is open for comment.
The area I was concerned about, looking at the picture on the screen, is an area that's not designated as a parking space, not the berm, but the other area where a car could pull in is about 20 feet of distance between the current front of the house, if that's what the green is, and the right-of-way. And I'm concerned about vehicles parking in there, visiting people, whoever. And that's why I was suggesting that the applicant might be required to have no parking signs posted so that only parking could occur in that one spot.
Planning Director Tahan?
Mr. Wood, we'll direct the question to you. Would you be willing to accept the condition that will require you to put no parking signs on that portion of the driveway area?
I have no problem with that, but I guess what we need, what we all need to realize is that this has been a problem for 50-plus years. I have made it infinitely better than it was. No parking sign or not, with the traffic traveling there in well in excess of 50 miles an hour sometimes, and a 35, there will be a time where, you know, you're kind of white knuckled there. I'm happy to put an aesthetically pleasing no-parking sign. I mean, this is at the front of the property, so I would be concerned that, you know, I would want it to be aesthetic. But at the end of the day, this is better than what's there. But I cannot promise you that no one's ever going to park there just because you've got Shore Drive there. And it's going to be difficult to park there because this apron that's shown here is what's required by Rick Lowman, by the city. And so it is very tight. It's infinitely better because before, you could have five or six cars perpendicular to this, all backing out into Shore Drive. So this is by no means perfect, but it's a lot better than it has been for 50 years. All that said, I'd have no problem putting a nice aesthetic, small, no-parking sign low on the retaining wall. I just don't want a sign right in front of the rental, you know, that looks, you know, inappropriate. I hope that answers the question.
Seeing no more questions from the Planning Commission, we do have three speakers signed up to comment. The first speaker is Todd Solomon. I'm sorry, the first speaker is John Keenan, followed by Todd Solomon. Please identify yourself for the record and pause three seconds before speaking. Thank you.
Yes, my name is John Keenan. Again, agreeing with Mr. Wood, this property is 70 years old, and the owner has dramatically improved the property. Like he's commented, the parking situation is much better than it was the last 50 years prior to owning the bill and buying the property. Cars are parked on Shore Drive, blocking the view of motorists. You know, the owner lives seven houses away and is available by the cell 24/7. He's been a professional property manager for more than 30 years. It's a great location for short-term rentals as it's next to the state park, not on a neighborhood street, and across from the bay. This will support older families of campers in First Landing who find it difficult to camp with younger families. That's why I'm supportive of his request for short-term rental.
Are there any questions of Mr. Keenan by the Planning Commission? If so, please raise your virtual hand. The next speaker is Todd Solomon. Please note that you have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself for the record and pause three seconds before speaking. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commission members. My name is Todd Solomon, President of Cape Story by the Sea, also the current president of the Shore Drive Community Coalition. Shore Drive Community Coalition has been in existence for over 20 years. One of our standing positions for the coalition is to make and keep Shore Drive as safe as possible for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. We do not have an issue with making this a short-term rental, as I've noted in the email comments to you. Our main issue is the visibility, and we understand it came with the property. It's been like that forever. It's been documented by Cape Henry Shores multiple times and requests to have a stoplight put there, too. So it's unfortunate that Mr. Wood has that property and that issue with it. He has made it better, that's correct. And it looks like it could get even slightly a bit better. I know this thing was, it's a moving target as of yesterday. It started with three cars parked out front, is what was posted last week. Went to two cars. Now it's down to one car, and that was done like around 5:00 o'clock yesterday. So my next question would be, is it okay to keep moving the cars and putting them in the back and stacking them? Why not make it perfect now and move that one car that's out front into the back also? Have all the cars parked in the back, landscape that whole front? That visibility out there with, had to put a sign there that says, "Don't park on the grass," or whatever. Maybe that could happen, too. But at one point, all three of those cars were up front. Now, everybody's in the back. Once again, without having a line of site study done, we're shooting it in the dark here to try and explain where the best spot for that property would be. And if I agree with Mr. Commissioner Inman, that as cars would be parked vertically there if you're having a party or have extra people coming to visit, you know, they could be they could be parked in there perpendicular to Shore Drive, which would just counteract that whole parallel aspect there of parking spot number one. So, you know, let's make it perfect. We're at the ability to do this, make it a short-term rental with all six car parking spots in the back and no parking up front. And if it could be done with a line of sight study, I think it's still going to need a line of sight study done. And I would hope that Engineer Lohman would provide that. I'm surprised it hasn't been done already. The fact that there's multiple accidents all happening there often, that would have been one of the first things I think should have been done. So I'll defer. Again, we don't have an issue with short-term rental. The property uses short-term rental, but that's possible.
Are there any questions of Mr. Solomon by the Planning Commission? If so, please raise your virtual hand. The last speaker is David Williams. Note that you have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself for the record and pause three seconds before speaking. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is David Williams. I hope you can hear me all right. I'm a resident of Cape Henry Shores and the past president of Shore Drive Community Coalition. I support Todd in his statements. He's been there a long time. He's, Shore Drive Community Coalition has consistently tried to improve the safety along Shore Drive. As a resident of Cape Henry Shores, I've seen very dangerous situations occur because of obstruction in the line of sight vision when you stop at the stop line on Kendall as you try to exit off Kendall onto Shore Drive. There's a problem along this section of Shore Drive with speeders. It was not resolved by lowering the speed limit from 45 to 35, and it continues. Back in 2007, we tried to get a traffic light, and we tried to find out. Our residents were saying to us that they were having problems. We had one resident that had two traffic accidents trying to get out. We were trying to determine what the problem was. The problem was with line of sight as you look west. That eastbound traffic is hidden by any obstructions from your view. And when they're coming at you at 35, 45, or 50 miles an hour, you have a very little leeway, very little margin of error. An inexperienced driver or somebody that is not experienced enough to judge that well enough would be in a very perilous position. I'm not opposed to this being a short-term rental, but I think before this is a short-term rental and the parking plan is approved, the city really needs to do an official line-of-sight survey from the whole position on Kendall, looking west. Only from that can we see whether it makes federal highway standards. Right as of now, it is my estimate as a layman that this does not meet federal highway standards for 35, 45, or 50 miles an hour as these vehicles are coming at you. I'd like to see a line-of-sight, an official line-of-sight survey being done before this is approved. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Are there any questions of Mr. Williams by the Planning Commission? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, you have the floor, Ms., I'm sorry. Planning Director Taha?
Yes, thank you, Bill. I believe we have Rick Lohman that's also online. If he would like to comment, I know he's prepped to answer any questions. But Rick, we'll hand it over to you. There have been a lot of discussion about potential studies that need to be done and compliance. So if you can take a moment, please.
Hey, good afternoon. This is Rick Lohman, Public Works Traffic Engineering. And I have been listening to this, and I did get, I did get Mr. Solomon's email last night with some of the questions on it regarding Kendall Street and Shore Drive intersection. I'm prepared to give you information regarding all four of his questions, but really, the only one that plays into what we're considering right now, which is the short-term rental of Mr. Wood's property, the only question that, you know, really I need to answer is, as shown, with the parking plan as shown, the one parked car there will not interfere with the line of sight coming from Kendall Street, you know, looking west. You know, with that area being a green space, a low-level green space, the driver's eye is about three and a half feet. So as long as we're, you know, less than three feet, we're in good shape if no car is parked in that green area. So I could say without a doubt that, you know, that your sight distance isn't impeded by a car parked in space number one. I did take a look at that this morning. You know, some of the other things I could answer to Mr. Solomon and Mr. Williams directly with them. But as far as the short-term rental goes, you know, if cars are parked per this plan, then sight won't be impeded. If you'd like me to answer as soon as I can.
Thank you, Rick. I think that's what the commission needed to have answered for them.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Alcaraz. Commissioner Alcaraz, your mic is open for comment.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks for answering that. I do have one question on the, like, a traffic control parking plan. Are you okay with that 12-foot, with the backup on the cars in the back? Is that sufficient?
Can you put the plan back up? The 12-foot wide driveway going to the back, that is sufficient for a single family or a duplex? It's really a private issue. So we don't have, Traffic Engineer really doesn't have much to say regarding the onsite circulation, except for the, you know, for the area there in the front. We would comment on that circulation. But with five cars parked in the back, I mean, they're going to have to maneuver themselves in and out if you actually do have five cars in there. But that's not something that Traffic Engineer generally comments on. But a 12-foot driveway width, you know, leading back there is nothing substandard. We've seen smaller ones than that. As far as the apron goes, you know, we worked on that apron Monday and Tuesday to get it to work and make it look as much like a standard, you know, Public Works entrance, residential or commercial, that you'd find on an arterial roadway with a speed of 35 miles an hour or higher. So the entrance I'm good with, and, you know, the driveway to the back, that's not really my issue per se.
Staff acknowledges, Director?
Mr. Alcaraz, so staff is, zoning and planning staff has reviewed that parking layout and is comfortable with the ability to have essentially, what's called the hammerhead, where they can back out into that area. If we can put the parking plan back up, please. There's an area where they're able to back up and then turn, and so staff is comfortable that they can maneuver this. Although tight, they can maneuver this with the distances and as it's shown.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Inman. Commissioner Inman, your mic is open for comment.
I'd like to ask Rick Lohman about the suggestion I made about prohibiting parking in the area in front of the residents that's now shown as gray concrete. Guess that's what it's going to be. So that you couldn't get cars parked perpendicular to Shore Drive. And would that assist in keeping the view line clear?
Rick, would you like to respond, please?
Yes. So because this is a, I guess you could put conditions on this. You can always put a condition that says, okay, yeah, no parking is allowed in that area. However, the enforceability of that, from a public point of view, meaning the police or, you know, whatever sign you put up would be nothing more than a private recommendation. Or, I mean, it could be a condition of the approval of this that could be enforced by zoning or whoever is going to, you know, operate the renewal of these permits. But as far as an official no parking sign, there'd be no grounds to enforce a no parking sign on private property. So, you know, the police couldn't come and tow anybody. It would just be something that you could put as a condition that says basically, if there is, you know, if there is a problem there and people are starting to park like that, that you could renew it. You could, you know, or you could pull that permit for that.
Thank you. Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Inman. Commissioner Inman, your mic is open for comment.
Well, having heard that, I would think that even if you put it in the category of deterrent from parking, it would be helpful. And apparently, it could also, if it's part of our conditions, that it be there. And neighbors, other people, drivers who are finding that there are cars violating that parking prohibition, that causing a problem with visibility, then that could be enforced through zoning. So it seems like this visibility thing's a big problem. We should do everything we can, I think, to try to prohibit it or impede it. So I would suggest a condition that no parking signs be posted and that the staff design those signs in harmony with what the property owner would like to have in terms of aesthetics, making sure that it's very clear and visible. That's it.
Thank you. There are no more speakers, Madam Chair. You have the floor, Ms. Oliver, for Planning Commission discussion or to entertain a motion.
Thank you, Bill. So I'm going to open the floor for discussion by the Planning Commission or entertain a motion at this time. Please raise your hand if you have a comment or a motion, and the staff will open up your microphone.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Inman. Your mic is open for comment.
I would move for approval of the application with the conditions as stated and the additional condition that there'll be no parking signs, more than one, in the area in front of the residents in a location and a design approved by the staff.
Madam Chair, staff opens the mic for you to call for a second.
May I have a second, please?
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redman. Your mic is open for comment.
Yeah. So what does more than one mean, Mike? I mean, there's one parking space we're concerned about in the front. I don't understand what you, what are you talking? Can you be more specific about what it is you're asking?
Mr. Inman?
Mr. Inman? Staff acknowledges...
I'm trying to leave it to the staff and the applicant to work together that there not be just one sign, but I would think that you would need at least two located in the front. The staff might think it needs to be three. I don't know, but more than one. It's up to them. It's up to the staff and the applicant to work out the number of signs.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Weiner. Your mic is open for comment.
I would like to ask Mr. Wood his thought. I know he mentioned something about a new parking sign there, but being that Mr. Lohman said that one car, as long as there's only one car there, that would not mess the line of sight up. But I'd like to ask Mr. Wood if he's still on, I don't know if he's still on or not, what his thoughts are again on that?
Wilson, you all have a motion that's hanging. There needs to be a second on this motion before we can have discussion.
I got it. Yes. Can I second it?
Yes. Staff acknowledges the hand raised by Commissioner Oliver.
Oh, I can't. Never mind.
Somebody just second it.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redman. Your mic is open for comment.
No, I'm not going to make a second, so I'll just move on.
Because it's going to die for lack of a second.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Weiner. Your mic is open for comment.
I don't want to make a second on this because I'm not sure how I want to see this go. So I could, can I make an, I don't know, what is it? It's another motion to just approve the as-is, do the application as-is? Do we talk to Mr. Wood?
Make that substitute motion. Now I need a second for the substitute. Come on, guys.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Alcaraz. Your mic is open for comment.
I second the substitute motion from Mr. Weiner.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Inman. Your mic is open for comment.
I don't know what the substitute motion is, but I do want to make it clear that we have a plan that shows a parking space, which is fine. And Mr. Lohman says that's fine. That's parallel to Shore Drive and up against the house. I'm trying to address the prohibition of parking of random cars pulling in perpendicular to Shore Drive or any other way, sideways, whatever, in that area that might obstruct the view of drivers coming out of Kendall Street. It just doesn't, it seems like a no-brainer to me. I don't understand why it's causing a problem. So I would be willing to change my motion to say two signs as opposed to leaving it open if that seems to be disturbing to anyone.
Staff acknowledges the, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Inman, we currently have a motion on the floor to approve as submitted, including the revised parking layout provided today at the briefing. I believe you have a comment for Mr. Wood or a potential for any of those that motioned or seconded if they would consider adding a condition to prohibit parking in the front in some manner. I don't know if we want to have Mr. Wood come back on to address Mr. Inman's comments. Mr. Wood, are you available?
Yes. I'm sorry, I've been trying to. If there, in the future, if there's some way that you could have the applicant raise his hand or something, because this conversation's been going on, and I haven't even had a chance to respond. I don't want to make this condition on the no parking signs. It's, the layout on this is infinitely better than it is today. It's much safer than it is today. This whole thing is a lot safer than it is today. I don't want to get into a policing issue with trying to deal with people who see the no parking sign and worrying about all this. It just, I wish I could take you all out there because the turn is so incredibly sharp to get to the back because of the telephone pole and everything else that you can't park there anyway. And it's hard, and you can't see it from this picture. But, yeah, I don't think that we need a no parking sign. And I don't have a problem if someone wants to meet me out there and we can look at it. But I don't want to make it a condition because, number one, I don't think it's needed. And number two, I don't think, there's no way to, you know, you would have a no parking sign. You'd have to have the sign that says, "No parking, you know, eight feet this direction and six foot four inches." I mean, it's just, it's kind of meaningless. And if you look, I've got, I cut that wall. That's a great picture. I cut that site back five feet to provide more, you know, room off of Shore Drive. And the only place to put it would be low on that... and the only place to put it would be low on that retaining wall. I absolutely don't want a big post in the middle of the, of the house, and this is an older picture, actually, but, you know, so the only place to put it would be on that low retaining wall, and I just don't see the point of it. I'm happy to meet somebody out there, but I definitely do not want it to be a condition of the, of this, because, again, everything I've done here makes it way better than it is currently, and way better than it's been for the last 50 years. So, I think what I've done is, is certainly better than anybody else has done in 50 years. So, that's my, that's my thought on the no parking sign.
Staff acknowledges the hand of Commissioner Oliver.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, I, I do, I do know this, I gotta put my mask on, don't I? I do, I know this property well, and I've ridden by it hundreds and hundreds of times, and what Mr. Wood has done to it, to improve it, is much, much better than the condition, the parking condition it was previously. I think it's a huge improvement for Kendall Street and for Shore Drive, and I just don't really have an issue with this at all. I, I think had he not done any of this, it would've continued to be a, a problem for the neighborhood as they exited that street. So, I think it's, I think it's a great improvement as far as the sightline goes with this piece of property.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redmond. Your mic is open for comment.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just wanna say, at any given time, Rick Lowman's one of the smartest guys in the room, and, and I don't know a better way to come up with judgments on the issues that we're debating than what he says. I certainly trust his judgment better than I trust my own about something like that, and I'm very comfortable that if he says he's comfortable with it, then I am too, and I hope we can get to a vote here quickly. Thank you.
All right. We have a substitute motion to approve the application made by Commissioner Weiner and seconded by Commissioner Alcaraz. Are any planning commissioners abstaining from the vote? The vote is now open, and staff will call each commissioner individually. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes. If you are opposed, say no. Please pause three seconds after your name is called before speaking. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Marshall Coleman will announce the vote result.
By recorded vote of eight, four, and zero against, Agenda Items 24 and 25 are hereby recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Agenda Item 30, John Keenan for a conditional use permit request for short-term rental at 410 Terrace Avenue in the Beach District. The applicant is John Keenan. Mr. Keenan has signed up to speak. Please provide a summary of your request, and remember to identify yourself for the record, and pause three seconds before speaking, so that we can activate your microphone. Mr. Keenan, you have the floor. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I would like, like to thank the Planning Commission for this opportunity to speak to you. I am John Keenan, a retired U.S. Navy Lieutenant Commander with 22 years of service. Myself and my wife, Robbie, are graduates of Old Dominion University and Norfolk State University. We built this house three years ago with the intention to serve as our retirement home in the near future. We love Virginia Beach. We currently reside in San Diego, California, where I serve as President and CEO of Southern California Anesthesia Services. Let me first say, due to the coronavirus pandemic, I do not have any intention on using my house as a short-term rental this year for the safety of any occupants and my family. I am directly exposed to caring for these patients, so I would never want to put any individual at risk. My house is valued at close to 3/4 of a million dollars. My approach to using this house as a short-term rental is as a high-end expensive rental catering to the more affluent renters. With that said, using a licensed Realtor company to serve as property manager, I expect a higher caliber clientele to ensure my neighbors are not disrupted in any way. I pursued a short-term rental because my plans are still to spend significant amount of time at my residence. Again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the Planning Commission? Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Planning Commissioner Redmond. Commissioner Redmond, your mic is open for comment.
No, I'm sorry. Still butterfingers.
We have two speakers signed up to comment. The first speaker is Angela Ratliff, followed by Chris Wood. Note that you have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself for the record, and pause three seconds before speaking. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Angela Ratliff. I live next door to Mr. Keenan. I've lived here for 20 years. The reason why I'm speaking today is on behalf of most of the residents on this street have lived here for over 20 years. They are all mostly elderly, over the age of 65. They are not, you know, technical savvy, so they've asked me to please speak for them on their behalf today, so I appreciate everyone's attention and listening to. Their concerns are, of course, the transientness of the people coming and going. No disrespect to the Keenans. We don't know them very well, but they do have a lot of concern about, the size of the home does occupy quite a few people, and they are concerned about having lots of people renting the Airbnb and becoming a party house, since it is so, in such close proximity to, you know, the oceanfront, with the noise and the disturbance of the elderly folks on the street. So, again, thank you for your time, and I just wanted to speak on their behalf and their concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Ratliff by the Planning Commission? If so, please raise your virtual hand. The next speaker is Chris Wood. Note that you have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself for the record, and pause three seconds before speaking. Thank you.
Thanks, again. This is Chris Wood. I promise this will be the last time you hear from me today. Um, I, I have to tell you, I really think this is a very unique property. I have known John and his wife, Robbie, for, gosh, probably 30-plus years. They are phenomenal people. They're incredible professionals. John is very humble, but he served our country for many, many years, for more than 20 years, and talking to him about what he has done with these Corona cases in California would, would really make you, make you cry. It's, it's amazing what he's done. I also think it's an amazing testament that this family lives in San Diego, yet has built a beautiful house in Virginia Beach, which is where they wanna retire. And I think you hear, I think that's a real testament to our city, that, that he has built this beautiful, beautiful house in Virginia Beach for his family, and he lives in San Diego, so it's quite amazing. I think the other thing that's very important is this home will not be a rental solely. Earlier today, we were talking about how the houses are built as businesses and that type of thing, and this couldn't be further from that. It'll still primarily be their family's second home. They are going to employ a professionally managed real estate company, Atkinson Real Estate, to manage the short-term rentals. In addition to that, they also have a caretaker who comes by the house, not even related to the short-term rental, but they, they, the yard is absolutely beautiful. It's, it's a phenomenal property. And there's no way this will be a party house. John has so much invested in this house, from, from the kitchens to the outside, to the, to the landscaping, to his personal toys and kayaks and things that belong to his family and his kids. There won't be a party house, I can promise you that. I also think the location's perfect, as it's really close to the boardwalk and the fishing center and that, but I just can't say enough about the Keenans and their, their professionalism and their character to tell you that this will, this will be a well-run facility. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the Planning Commission? Or, Chris Wood? Sorry. If so, please raise your virtual hand. Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redmond. Commissioner Redmond, your mic is open for comment.
It's not me, man. It's this thing. I apologize.
There are no more speakers, Madam Chair. You have the floor, Ms. Oliver, for Planning Commission discussion and to entertain a motion.
Great. Thank you, Bill. I'm gonna open the floor for discussion amongst the Planning Commissioners, or entertain a motion at this time. If you will, please raise your hand for a comment or a motion, and the staff will open up your microphone.
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Redmond. Your mic is open for comment.
Madam Chairwoman, I move approval of the application.
Do I have a second, please?
Staff acknowledges the virtual hand raised by Commissioner Weiner as a potential second. Commissioner Weiner, your mic is now open.
I second that.
Hearing a second, a motion to approve the application has been made by Commissioner Redmond and seconded by Commissioner Weiner. Are any planning commissioners abstaining from the vote? The vote is now open, and staff will call each commissioner individually. If you are in favor of the motion, say yes. If you are opposed, say no. Please pause three seconds after your name is called before speaking. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Inman? Ms. Klein? Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner? Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Marshall Coleman will announce the vote result.
By recorded vote of eight, four, and zero against, Agenda Item 30 is hereby recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was the last item on the agenda. The mic is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like everybody, to thank everybody for attending and participating today in our virtual hearing, and I'd also like to thank staff for all their hard work during these virtual meetings, and the Planning Director, and all Planning staff, and everyone here, and in the other office. It's been a, it's always a feat to incorporate everybody, the public and the other commissioners and planning staff, which is all for Lynn Haven Boulevard, and bring them all here virtually, and you all did a great job again today, and I just can't thank you enough. And so, just so everybody knows, the recording of this meeting will be posted on the Planning Commission's webpage within 10 days. That website is vb.gov.com backslash PC dot. The applications not deferred will be scheduled for a future city council meeting, and staff will let the applicants know when that will be, and those dates will be posted on the Planning Commission's webpage. At this time, I will say this meeting's adjourned.